All right, first order of business is to pledge allegiance. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I would call Miss Bond, everyone that's here. Next, item four is approval of agenda, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Please.
Some of them.
Motion of Ms. Johnson. We have a second.
Second.
Second of Dr. Lynn. Any further discussion? Not if you're for the agenda, please raise your hand. And any opposed? Special items, is there anyone here to address the board about agenda item or non-agenda item? And I think Ms. Cantrell, this would be you.
Oh, this is me.
Please.
Yes, I do have a non-agenda. Okay. I'm Michelle Cantrell, I'm the art teacher at Jack T. Ferris School. This is Jennifer Ossington, she's a Bel Air art teacher. And we have got together as a district-wide elementary art teacher people, and we wanted to do different things to show off our talents. I'm the oldest one, I mean, been here in the law office, I'm certainly not old. Jennifer is new to the chair for Fineview County, so we're really glad to have her. And we have one other art teacher, Lonnie Puit, that's new, and she is at Rocky Lee. And so anyway, being new, we wanted to really work close together. So we decided, Jennifer kind of came up with, we go to the arts academy, and the school system is nice enough to send everybody there. And one of the projects was a quilt kind of collaborative thing, and so we decided to take that idea. And the four elementary schools, the third grade, came together, and we let our students, and a five-by-five piece of paper get created, and we talked about quilts, and we talked about design. The color spectrum, you can kind of see follows more or less the rainbow. But anyway, this is by East Lincoln, Kelly Orr, and this is Jennifer Ossington, this is Bel Air. The grain, of course, is Pharah, we made. And then Lonnie Puit with Rocky Lee, this is Blue. And we just kind of all came together, and this was, this is kind of just doing it, and we thought it came together pretty good because it was different. Art teachers, different students, different ideas, and you can kind of see, kids had a good time.
Great.
It's wonderful.
It's beautiful.
I love it.
Thank you.
Y'all did a great job.
We wanted to let you know what's going on. And we wanted to really, and that's one of the things, when we talked to the new art teachers, get them over here, I said, it's a great school system, the art teachers are very close, the collaboration is good, we have a lot of meetings, we're there for you. Anything you need, we're there for you. So nobody needed it, because everybody did. We sent pictures, we're going, oh, this is going to work. So it was fun, and we appreciate you letting us show off this.
Does Mr. Hensley know you, Mrs. Heer, Atticus?
Yes, yes, he came up here, thought he was going to supervise, we already handed it out.
They all supervised him, like.
Oh, yeah, he supervised, yeah, we couldn't have done it without. We appreciate it. Thank you for letting us.
Thank you.
The picture on the paper was really good, too. The colors were really great.
Yeah, it's kind of like a impressionist type thing, but the further back, you know, the more, is it in one piece? You kind of look, and it's the chaos of the third grade, you have all these little minds, and they're just, I mean, I had things coming out, I had things going off, and going, you know, all these ideas, and so we got to keep it a five-by-five, and they were looking at me like, well, it is, here it is. But you can kind of, far away, you can see it's just all one piece, one idea. So we had fun.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Unfinished business, first is facilities and maintenance committee. We have not met since our last meeting, but I'm going to have Ms. Bond check Dr. Lynn and Ms. Lawson, and see if we can meet before the next study session. I think we need to, I don't think we ought to recommend to the whole board for a regular meeting, the ideas of engineering studying and contracting work to be done, and the training problems at Bel Air. I think we need to present our, what we, our recommendations to the study session, let everybody be exposed to it, for a good discussion.
Do we have those back?
We've got enough to talk about.
We have a concept back and an estimated budget, but in terms of details, we don't have that.
We won't have that until we do more work.
That's right.
Yeah, but I think we need to, our recommendation, that need to come to this meeting, it needs to come to the study session, because it's complex. All right. The testing accountability resolution, Dr. Lawson.
Two years ago, we submitted a resolution to the TSBA Board of Directors. We were not successful in having the Board of Directors support that resolution. However, from the floor, we had folks speak adamantly on behalf of the resolution, and we were able to see the resolution enacted by the TSBA delegate assembly, and it became one of the planks on their legislative platform. We have reworked this resolution a bit. In general, here are the couple of components that we have added, and Susan will correct where I missed. But in general, we have added to the resolution, an update of the last two years of testing, where we have seen problems in both years, and we have noted those problems. We have maintained in the resolution, a desire to allow school districts to utilize either the ACT or SAT suite of assessments. And two years ago, remember, we were talking about the concept of ESSA, we believe will allow us to have a state-specific test. ESSAA, in fact, was enacted, and does in fact allow us that latitude, and we've incorporated that in the resolution. Additionally, Susan, I think the only thing that we added was a statement to the effect of, let's don't test in aggregate any more in hours than the grade level of the student. So we thought it's bad business to test a seventh grader for 14 hours. And there is nothing scientific about don't test a seventh grader more than seven hours, but there seems to be little scientific in the, in the logic associated with what we test now. So that serves the resolution and the updates therein. Ms. Fanning, what did I leave out?
I think you covered it.
Hi, got some questions.
Sure, question.
So Dan, this will go before the TSBA Board of Directors first?
This will go to the Board of Directors first. This will also be something that, as a board, we can take to the regional meeting on the 27th, and I would advise that as an opportunity to grease the skids just a bit.
Yeah, and the next Director's meeting is the next day, because I'll be at the 2nd, so I can help.
Okay. Because do you think it's likely that the TSBA Board of Directors will give us a green like this time?
You know, we, I can assure you one vote.
Thanks, Pat.
We've got some in on the Board of Directors that we didn't have before.
Not stellar performance, but a performance, I can tell you.
Okay, well, here's the question.
Do we have a motion to accept the resolution?
Some.
I got a motion by Ms. Fogarty. How about a second?
Second.
Okay. Second by Ms. Ossington. Any further discussion? Not for further accountability of resolution, please raise your hand. Any opposed? All right. I'm going to make a little preface here on the health insurance premium. I was under the impression this had to be done. Now, it does not. We can put it off a month, so that it goes to the study session. I think there's a lot of questions that y'all have asked me, and I've seen in the emails, and it'd make much, a lot of sense to me to table a motion, take it to study session, and then bring it back. But I'm willing, if there's a motion.
I just don't understand how we can take it to the study session, and the study session is in October, and open enrollment begins in October.
That's the question I had for him, but go ahead, Dan.
So can you absolutely, you will simply provide our employees less time with whatever the new rate is. So here's what we can do. The employees know that our, our new rate was the rate approved this time of the year ago. And until you, as a board, take action to lift that cap, there will be no change. So we can certainly advise employees that, we have surveyed neighboring schools, we're going to visit with our board, we're going to consider this at a later board meeting, but the cap is what was enacted last year.
Don't hear me now, this is not, that's just one idea. That was my idea. And if somebody wants to make a motion, we get a second, votes, we can act on it, deny it.
I think the overwhelming opinion is that we would like to be able to do what we can to help the teachers in that regard. I think the discussion would not lie in wanting to raise a cap, the discussion would lie in the fact that we dipped $785,000 into reserves, and this would be another expense, and I would like for us to see our way clearly, how we're going to get out of that position, and it not be a recurring situation in the future.
And we can also, we can also do different amounts, we can raise a cap for certain groups, you know, we can do a whole lot, but that's going to take a lot of work, discussion, I think, that everybody ought to be involved in. What I'd like to do now is get a motion one way or the other, if somebody wants to make a motion, let's get a second.
Well, I think I'd like to go ahead and make a motion.
Okay. I'll second it.
Wait, what is the motion?
Actually, actually, it was to Dan's recommendation that we lift the cap to cover the.
You want to lift the cap? Oh, okay.
Yes, I want to.
Got a motion by Ms. Lawson, then. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
There's a second by Dr. Lynn.
All right. Now, let me offer just a bit of information, in case this gets tabled, because I want to be able to explain what you guys have in front of you. So what you have, Ms. Fogarty asked about what neighboring school districts did. So I put out the survey to Bedford, Coffey, Franklin, Moore Counties, as well as Manchester City. If you look on that survey, you will see the, the first value is the amount that the Board of Education pays for employee-only health insurance. And that amount in Tullahoma is 524, Bedford 524, Coffey 612, Franklin 564, Manchester 612, Moore 587. So you see the process. Then we add to that, the amount plus a child, the amount plus employee plus spouse, and then family coverage. So this gives you a picture of how we compete with our neighbors. So when you see the print in green, that indicates the lowest in that particular line.
There was only one mistake, though, Dan, I thought.
Right, right, there is, we're not the lowest in employee and child. Coffey County.
Oh, okay, thank you. I'll clean that up, thank you. And the red is the highest. They are all purchasing exactly the same insurance coverage, from the same vendors. So there's not something out there that Moore Counties buy that we don't have available, or we're buying that they don't have available. Everybody's buying from the same vendor. This simply indicates what the Board of Education is paying for each of those employees in that set.
Could we get Teresa to clarify her motion, and just so that I understand exactly what your motion was?
Okay, we need to increase.
I understand that, I just want, I was just wondering, what motion are you bringing?
The overall, that just.
So not to, for us to discuss it in study session, but to go on and vote on it tonight?
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
And Steve's seconding that.
Right, because we've already discussed it in study session, and we've had emails, and we've had documentation. I think we know where we stand in regard to other school districts, and I think we know where we stand financially, and we know where our heart is at. And it's just being able to reconcile our heart with the bottom line.
Right, okay, so the.
And what is the amount to the bottom line?
Teresa's going to discuss.
For a year.
Chairman, I've got a question.
I'm sorry.
I wanted to clarify, but follow up with her question. I assume Ms. Lawson's motion is the motion on the screen, is that correct?
To increase the cap.
Yeah, the recommended motion.
The recommended, yes. The recommended motion to increase, to continue to fund 100 percent. Let's see, to increase the cap on employee health to 587 monthly. The 587 is the cap for single employees, current TCS. Do I need to read all that?
No, no, I just, I just wanted to clarify.
Will we have a chance to discuss it before we vote, or no?
You certainly do. We're doing that right now?
Okay, because I, I was hoping we were going to have a chance to actually discuss it in study session, but apparently we're not going to, so that's fine. We'll just kind of discuss it now, I guess.
We have to pick us a pass.
Right, okay. I, I guess, because the only thing I'm noticing in those numbers, and I just haven't had a lot of time for us to talk about it, I know we've gotten the emails, but what I'm noticing is, when we look down at how many of our employees purchase this, the area that we are, as Dan said, the most lacking is just the employee, and that is actually the one that we have the highest percentage of people doing. So we only have a quarter of our group who are selecting this bottom line. So if we raise everything, what I'm, what I'm afraid of is, we're doing a blanket raise, and we aren't looking at our resources just per, like, where's the majority, where's the greatest need, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm not comfortable with that motion at all, as it is, because I don't feel like it delves into maybe some of the other things. But we are where we are now, so that's where we are.
Let me clarify just a bit. The employee, we have 229 subscribers, there are 460 total purchasers. So it's a half, rather than a quarter.
No, no, I'm telling the family is a quarter, so what I'm saying is.
I'm with you, I'm with you.
Yeah, I'm saying, we're, we're raising, sorry, we're raising for one quarter of our group, we're raising, we're going up $200, you know what I mean? And then, like, but our, but, so I'm saying, I'm concerned, very concerned about what Steve said about, we're going to go into the home, or, you know, we're, we know we're in the red, so I'm like, wow, if we're going to look at increasing anything, I would not be a fan of going all across the board. I think let's address greatest concern, maybe the greatest need, you know, the area where we have the most, the highest script, and it's not the family, because the family's only a quarter, but.
At our last meeting, didn't we discuss that this would amount to $72,000?
For six months.
Six months.
Six months.
It's over $140,000 per year.
And let me tell you why.
That's every year, right?
Yes. Let me tell you why that's the case. Our renewal happens in January, and we're talking about from January through June, which is the balance of this budget. And candidly, Ms. Fogarty, before I did the survey, I would not have expected us to be as competitive at the top of the schedule as we are, and would not have expected us to be as far away at the bottom of the schedule as we are. So both of those elements surprised me.
I mean, it's just one of those things, I think, we got the information, but I don't think we've had time to really thoroughly discuss it, but, but, you know, if everyone feels like they've got a good handle on insurance, and they're ready to move forward, that's great. I just felt like we, I felt like we should have asked for this maybe a while back, I don't know. I'm glad we got it, but I felt like we, we probably need to do something.
What is the timeline for when we usually?
It will depend on when we get the numbers from the state. Typically, we get these numbers in June, July. And of course, that creates a bit of a challenge, because we don't have a July meeting. And this year, we were, yeah, I'm in favor of having July meetings now. This year, we are.
Tangent.
This year, we were a little behind, because we were later on adopting our budget for the city. So it's, can it happen more quickly? Ideally, it would serve us much better to have the numbers before we adopt a budget, but we never get those numbers in that time from the state. And the state is feeling like you don't need them, because it's a January renewal, rather than a July renewal. I, I get their concern, but I also get the fact that our budget is fixed in July, so we're kind of stuck.
And in October is.
Yep. October is the open enrollment.
Why?
So that's when our employees make the decision.
Well, the statement that we just said about, you know, it'd be 140,000 every year, that was based on a 2.5 percent increase this time, which was not guaranteed that it'll be that way in the future.
Oh, absolutely.
And so once before, when we addressed this subject, I remember distinctly stating that insurance freedoms are going to go up, through some kind of miraculous thing, I guess there was a little blip where something went down a little bit, but I think that's, that's where we live in. Healthcare costs, you know, my mom just spent the 22 days in ICU, and it was 700 and something thousand dollars for her bill. So I think we're looking at a situation where if the past is predictor of the future, those are going to increase, and not decrease. So what we're looking at, this time may be 140,000, but next time it may be considerably more. So I think in an effort to be competitive with other people, and with the concern, compassion that we have for our teachers, that's the reason we're trying to do something to help them. It's more worthwhile than maybe another place where we expend, but just like, just like was discussed in an email that went out, when we keep spending, we either have to reprioritize what we already have, or we have to let that person assume more of the responsibility, or we're going to have to raise taxes. And I for one are adamantly against raising taxes under just about any circumstance, even if you're tapping into state and burning, you know. So that's the way I feel on raising taxes.
Let me offer one statement. We've seen two relatively good years related to premium increases, but the reason we've seen those two good years is because we've seen a much greater out-of-pocket. I'll cite an example, a senior employee came and talked to Greg and I about a test that he was scheduled for, and that test was, was scheduled, he's to go into the doctor, and as he's talking to the receptionist about the test, he's got a bill for $4,200, and a statement as to, how do you want to pay for this $4,200 bill? His first thought was, you don't know that I have insurance. Second thought was, wait a minute, this is an out-of-pocket that has changed pretty dramatically from where we were in the insurance market, not just here, but everywhere in the last five years. So I, I think that while this employee was reluctant about writing that check, he at least had the ability to do so. There are a number of employees, and it's easy to talk about teachers, but there are a number of employees who are either young teachers or young, non-certified folks, and writing that check is not a possibility. It's, it's just not available to them. So to that end, I think they have taken on some more responsibilities, just to mitigate where we are with increasing premiums. And you're exactly right, once we go up, it's not going to go down, you know, it's going to go up in the future, but we have to be sensitive to where the market is. Don't hear me trying to talk anybody into anything. I'm trying to share with you the data, let you know where the market is, and let you know what our challenges look like. And that's what these data support.
I personally would just rather have some time to do some, looking into maybe making some changes in some of them, and not all of them. I didn't know that was an option.
The ones that lagged behind, that's one I would rather address, but now that's, we've got some.
Right, I mean, $140,000 minimum, and, and it's still, and I understand, I understand that it's all very expensive, and people having to pay out of pocket. But, but if you have to go on the open market, Clay and I, for four people, our insurance was $2,700 a month, and it wasn't even good. And our prescriptions were $900 a month, with no help. So, I mean, we still offer a really good package, and, and I wish we could keep up with everything, but I would like some time just to look and see if we can make some adjustments to the end that's, that is lower, that is more in need.
I am uncomfortable with making a decision at this time, because, like Kim, I feel like I need more statistical information, I need more breakdowns, and I want to make an educated vote.
But we have to vote on that motion, so I mean, we have to.
You have an active motion on that?
Yes, so we have to do that.
Unless we got something different and new, I'm ready to vote.
Okay.
If you're for the motion, Ms. Lawson put forward, and Dr. Lynn second, please raise your hand. If you're against the motion, please raise. All right, now, for the, next, we don't have to table now, what I would, what I'm going to do, unless four or five of you say, there's no way I want to talk about it, I'm going to ask it to be put on the study session, next study session. Can you do that? Board policies. The second, Dr. Carter, from what I understand, is the information, is that correct?
It's another vote, it is a second reading.
No, that's the first one. That's the second reading, so we do need a vote on number one, is that correct?
Tonight is the second reading.
Correct. And that, both of these policies have been looked at by Mr. Miller, we're ready to go.
There's only one policy.
Yeah, the first one, which is a second reading. All right. Entertain a motion, then, to accept on second reading, Board Policy 4.608. Ms. Fogarty's got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Johnson. Any further discussion? Not for a motion, please raise your hand. Any opposed? And I am correct, then, on number two, Section 1 Board Operations is, is an information item, is that correct?
Yes, and there are no changes recommended.
All right, thank you. That brings us to election of officers. And we have done this, we've got Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary, and we've, in the years past, we've voted on one at a time, we've done all kinds of different things, but that be, this is going to be your all's choice. So I'm ready to entertain a motion for anything.
What are they, as of now?
The Chair is.
Beast's the chair.
Ms. Ossington is Vice Chair, and Ms. Lawson is the Secretary.
I make a motion that we just keep our officers as they are.
I agree. Second, I have a motion.
We have a motion, then, by Ms. Robinson, and a second by Ms. Fogarty. Any discussion, especially about the Chairman? If not, if you're for the motion, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Thank you all. Approval of attorneys? Do you have?
We have a, we have acted on approval of Henry Bean McCord and Miller in the month of June.
That's what I thought. So this is the special ed?
This is only special ed. We have used John Kitch for years. In the last couple of years, we've had a, a couple of issues that have been assigned by insurance carriers, that have been assigned to a firm in Chattanooga, and let me fully disclose, my daughter works for that firm. Scott Bennett and Mary DeCamp are the partnership that we are proposing for special ed. There are probably a half dozen firms in the state that focus on special education issues. And as we look at the firm closest to us that has that expertise, Scott Bennett probably is the principal who can provide that expertise.
Do we have the list of the others who, because we, I mean, this is the only one that we've had a chance to look at.
We have the list of the others who, 'cause we've, I mean, this is the only one that we've had a chance to look at.
We can cheer bring it. Yeah, we can cheer bring one.
Is Mr. Kitch retired? Is that what's happening?
Hasn't said that he is. Mr. Kitch, however, his term will be passing soon.
Is this his firm? What's, what's your take on this, Mr. Miller?
Uh, Bennett and DeCamp more than qualified. I mean, they would've been in my top two. And so I have...
Who's your, who's your top ones, please?
There is no top one. I mean, you've got...
I mean, but there is another one that you...
I mean, you've got Chuck Cagle's firm and you've got Scott Bennett's firm. They represent probably 75 out of, now, how many of our schools have them?
Bennett and DeCamp, 75%?
No, together. Together. The other one is Chuck Cagle.
Okay.
Who's, who's had a legal fight.
Scott does a very good work.
Okay. I heard Scott Bennett, he was at the Summer Law Institute this summer. He was the presenter.
They're both very, very respected.
What's the timestamp on this one? Do we have to vote today?
Well, no, let me, let me add to that. We have employed this A firm for special ed for the last five years and I'm using... I, the timestamp may be immediate and the timestamp may be that we could go a year and never fill an hour.
And you have something considered, most of the work that is covered with insurance, insurance companies choose.
They assign, we don't get to, yeah.
So the chances of this motion mattering are minuscule, it sounds like to me.
I don't know the last time it's been discussed, right?
I was just asking, because I didn't know if we needed to...
Yeah, we'll get some answers now that I didn't know either, Teresa.
Last special ed case we've had has been eight to 10 years.
Okay.
And, and that's been assigned by the insurance company.
Well, my, my recommendation would be go ahead and accept the recommendation, but that's, I need a motion from somebody else.
Okay, so good.
Ms. Lawson's made a motion to accept the firm of Bennett and DeCamp. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, or second by Ms. Robinson. Any further discussion? If not, if you're for the motion, please raise your hand. Any opposed? All right. Consent agenda, is there any item on the consent agenda that any member would like to remove for further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
Consent.
Motion by Ms. Fogarty? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Lynn. Any further discussion? No, if you're for the consent agenda as presented, please respond and raise your hand. Any opposed? All right. Dr. Lawson.
Ms. Kane, the floor is yours, ma'am.
Dr. Lawson, are you aware that Ms. Kane is now the mayor pro temp?
I am aware. In fact, noticed the other day at the planning and coordinating meeting, she was fighting back the urge to correct the mayor.
Yeah, I had to perform my first duty today. They called me from Nashville and saying, I need you to go and do something for me. Wow. I didn't see it was just a picture. I wanna thank everyone who attended the reception that we hosted last week for the superintendent and also for Jennifer Moe. She has started at City Hall, our new city administrator, and is doing a great job getting her feet wet. So please take time to drop by City Hall and meet her. She, we hope she'll be around for a long time and does a lot for our city, so she's over all of our departments. So please take a moment out and try, try to meet her. As you can see, Publix is coming together and right now, they're starting the first week in November. So that's crossing our fingers. So there's a lot going on at the city, a lot going on with Parks and Recreation, a lot of concerts and things. So go on the website, check that. The tourism group has a lot going on, trying to bring more tourism into the community. We found out at our planning and coordinating meeting the other day, Steve May wasn't there, but he sent me a text. They had 30,000 people, a record, go through Jake Daniels last month. So a lot of those people come through Tallahoma, so it's amazing. So a lot's going on, a lot of positive things, about a lot of inquiries about things, so we're still working on new businesses. Thank you, Greg.
Greg, report.
We have had, regarding personnel, we've had a couple of issues that have been atypical for us. We've lost two teachers since school started. And let me just give you a reminder of what Tennessee statute speaks to. Tennessee statute requires us to have a contract with each of our teachers, not with our non-certified employees, but with our teachers. And within that contract, a teacher may leave with, within a 30-day window of time. So it's, it's terribly atypical for us to have someone to resign after school starts, but we've seen two this year. And candidly, as we see a more competitive marketplace, I'm afraid we're gonna see more of that. We looked at our neighbors in Rutherford County hiring more than 400 teachers this year and it makes the market tough for us. We lost one of our folks to Rutherford County. It, it's a challenge that we're going to have to face and can we keep folks on? No, we can't. We can allow, we must allow them to leave after that 30 days has passed. So just wanted to let you know that that is atypical for us. We've probably gone several years without losing anyone without a corresponding transfer of spouse. But this year, atypical, and then we had one go to Asheville, North Carolina, and another go to Rutherford County. I believe, Mr. Carter.
Yes. Got it.
What was the Rutherford County, what was the teacher? Another one was an art teacher.
The other was special ed teacher?
CDC special ed.
At what school?
The high school.
Both are, both are at high schools?
Yes.
Yep. So I'd love to tell you, we've got a policy fix for that and we don't, there's not gonna be a policy fix for that. Statute mandates that someone can walk with 30 days' notice and that can and will be a challenge for us in the future. Other than that, I believe, Dr. Carter, we are fully staffed today.
Yes.
That's it, sir.
All right. Anything else needs to be brought? Not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, wait just a second.
I'm sorry.
Just one, one thing. One of our own big celebrity star, Dustin Lynch, will be inducted into the Grand Ole Opry tomorrow night. So he's one of our kiddos and I just wanted to give a shout out to that because I know he does a lot for community today.
Sure that hits the mitts too, please, Ms. Lawson.
That's Franklin.
Anything else?
It's Franklin.
Yep. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So good.
Motion by Ms. Fogarty, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Dr. Lynn. All those in favor, please respond and raise your hand. Any opposed? We are adjourned.